Mayor, the staff is ready whenever you're ready.
We're ready to roll. Judge, if you'd like to take over.
Thank you all for having me here. My name is Judge Shannon McPhee.
Judge Shannon McPhee, I am the Circuit Court Judge here in the 20th Judicial Circuit. My area I cover is Collier, Lee, Charlotte, Hendry, and Glades County. So it's my pleasure here, this is the second time that I've been able, had the pleasure to swear in members of the Benita City Council, and I appreciate the opportunity. All right, you all set?
I am, sir.
If you'll please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Laura Carr.
solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend
I solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend
the laws of the United States and the state of Florida.
The laws of the United States and the state of Florida.
that I will, in all respects
that I will, in all respects
observe the provisions of the Charter
observe the provisions of the Charter
and ordinances of the city of Benita Springs.
and the ordinance of the city of Benita Springs.
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council.
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of city council.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Have the family join us?
All right.
Do you want me to be holding this, or do you want them to be holding this? They have their hands, they have their hands full. They have their hands full, too.
You'll have to look very close.
All right, are we all set? If you'll raise your right hand to be sworn, let's go ahead and have, you want, or you want to hold it? Okay, very good. I, please state your name.
I, Jamie Bogas.
solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the laws of the state of Florida and of the United States.
the laws of the state of Florida, of the United States.
and that I will, in all respects
and that I will, in all respects
observe the provisions of the Charter
observe the provisions of the Charter
and ordinances of the city of Benita Springs.
and the ordinance of the city of Benita Springs.
and will faithfully discharge
and will faithfully discharge
the duties of the office of city council.
the duties of the office of city council.
Congratulations. Do you raise your right hand to be sworn, please? Oh, thank you. Okay. I
I.
state your name.
Nigel Patrick Fulick.
solemnly swear
solemnly swear
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the laws of the United States and the state of Florida.
the laws of the United States and the state of Florida.
that I will, in all respects
that I will, in all respects
observe the provisions of the Charter
observe the provisions of the Charter
and ordinances of the city of Benita Springs.
and ordinances of the city of Benita Springs.
and will faithfully discharge
and will faithfully discharge
the duties of the office of city council.
the duties of the office of city council.
Congratulations.
Oh, you got something to say? Well, I guess it's that time, well, everybody get seated here. Okay, we got 5:33 on Wednesday, December 7th, here in the city council's chambers. We have just completed the swearing-in ceremony, and thank you. We have three, we have two new city council people, and one re-elected. Laura Carr was re-elected. Can we call to order, how about the invocation? We have a pastor here, please come forward. We can rise for invocation if you're able.
Well, hello, good evening. My name is Pastor Christopher Mueller, and I'm with Legacy Life Church, and we are located on East Terry Street near Imperial Road. So thank you for allowing me to pray with you this evening. For our prayer, I'd like to read Psalm 104, verse 1. It says this, "Bless the Lord, oh my soul! Oh, Lord, my God, you are very great; you are clothed with honor and majesty. Heavenly Father, we do honor you this day as we come here and bow before you. You are our God, the Creator of everything, and we bring majesty and glory to your name. Father, thank you so much for allowing us to govern and manage what you have created, and, Lord, I pray for the success of these new members here tonight. I pray for success of this city council as they govern the peoples and the properties of this area. So, Father, we give you the glory. I pray that your name will be honored, and in your name we pray, Jesus. Amen."
Amen, thank you. Okay, now we pledge allegiance on three, unison, one, two, three.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Debbie, how about roll call?
Councilwoman Bogas.
Here.
Councilman Purdon.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilman Corey.
Here.
Councilman Fulick.
Here.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Here.
Okay, mayor is welcome. Well, thanks to you all for coming. We need your help, see, we need your help in guiding this city. We have six council people that are elected by different districts. Please contact your district representative with any concerns you have. It's there, they're more familiar with their districts than anybody else, and if you can't get satisfied with them, you can call me. And my number is (239) 213-8345. And you call me anytime, and we'll do what we can to help you. Okay, now we have public comment on anything except 9A and 13A. Any public comment? Yes?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, hello, City Council. My name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Benita 30 years ago, and I'm here in the downtown most every day, and I like to comment on the first agenda item, the swearing-in ceremony. This, of course, is the 81st anniversary of the horrific attacks in our country at Pearl Harbor. Attacks have precipitated our involvement in the Second World War, and ultimately, our victory in that war, which secured the democratic freedoms of billions of people across our planet. And our democracy, in our own city, was on full display just this past month. And thankfully, we had a lot of very capable and caring candidates that conducted a rigorous campaign, and I think our city was blessed to have three very capable elective, elected representatives. And it's also worth pointing out that these three elected candidates were the most vocal champions of continuing the downtown revitalization effort that our city started two decades ago. And that's a very important effort, and we saw it last night. And a huge thank you to city council and city staff for a beautiful holiday-at-the-park event, an event that was attended by thousands of people in our community, including my own family, with our two young kids, who enjoy going down the slides and making snowballs, and although they threw a few too many, I think, at one another. But what a wonderful event. And that event, I think, has a leg up on other events in our community nearby, like Naples or Fort Myers. But unlike when you attend events in those communities, you're, when you're in those downtowns, you're surrounded by shops and restaurants. And we have a few, but we need many more. And when we get those many more shops and restaurants, it will bring goods and services to our community. It'll be, bring great experiences to our community. It will bring lots of jobs to our community, and it will bring lots of tax revenues to help this city support itself and to fulfill its goals. And we're on this great path. The voters have spoken in favor of continuing the great work that our city and its staff have done for these 20-plus years, and when we complete this job with the finishing touches that you'll continue to work on, we hope, we will fulfill Benita Springs' destiny to no longer just be a throughway between Naples and Fort Myers, but a great destination for a lot of southwest Floridians, and certainly for Benetians. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. For the record, I'm Trish Leonard, business owner, resident of Benita Springs, and the president of the Benita Springs Downtown Business Alliance. I, too, want to echo what Kyle had just stated, that we are very fortunate to have a wonderful council, and we are looking forward to working with each and every one of you in our area. I live in District 2, so I'm very excited to see all the new things that are happening in our downtown area, and I know for a fact that our business owners, and as well as residents, are also looking for the same thing. So I want to say to think about everything you do this year and the years forward, and I just want to say, welcome aboard, and I know you're going to do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Chris Carmody with Gray Robinson. I'm part of the lobby group there. As you may know, item 15C on your agenda is the discussion of proposals you receive for state legislative and executive branch representation. I'm just letting you know that I'm here and can answer questions later when that comes up. Otherwise, good evening, and congrats on all that work.
Thank you.
sworn in and elected.
Thank you. Any other public comment? You could have gotten in line a little earlier.
Sorry about that.
My name is Sean Foster. We also reply to the lobbyist RFP, and I'm with the Sunrise Consulting Group, and we're also here available if you have any questions or any input you would like from our firm. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, move on to 9A, zoning land use. Is this, you got to read this?
No, I don't have to read this one. This is a zoning resolution for a special exception in the US 41 overlay. The applicant is here. At this time, I will swear in any witnesses. Anyone who's here or just has a general interest in fast food, restaurants, and coffee, and donuts, who may feel the need, the urge to step up at some point to speak, please stand and be sworn in at this time. Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. All right. Okay, presentation by staff.
Good evening, council, and welcome new members. Mary Zizo, Community Development, for the record. I will give a brief introduction, and then the applicant will make their presentation.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to have a presentation afterwards or answer questions. This is a request for a special exception at (24126) South Tamiami Trail. The applicant will show you where that is located. They are requesting a drive-through for a coffee and donut shop location. They believe it'll be Dunkin' Donuts, in front of the Diamond Oaks Village Retirement Community. And this special exception is needed because it is located within the US 41 overlay, which requires a special exception for all drive-through fast food restaurants. The applicant does recommend approval of this request, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. The zoning board did recommend approval as well, 5 to 0, and the applicant does agree with the conditions that we have outlined and proposed.
Can you tell me what the conditions that were approved?
Yes. So the building will be oriented according to the site plan shown. So, for example, the drive-through will not be completely visible from 41. We want to protect those view sheds, and that's taken care of, as well as adequate buffering for the residential use as well, which was already accommodated for in the 2015 rezoning that they had take place. Otherwise, this site is required to comply with all of our existing codes. No deviations are sought, to ensure that that's all taken care of.
Okay, you recommend an approval.
Correct.
And make a motion to approve?
Second. Second.
If you don't want to hear from the applicant, I would open it up at this time to public comment.
Public comment about a donut shop?
Is that what's definitely going in?
That's what the approval is for.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bogas.
Approved.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Fulick.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor, council.
Okay, here we go. Guess who's on deck? Okay, we have a special event here today, and Carly Serrarino has had five years with the city of Benita Springs. And she brought her work as well. I gave her this certificate, and I asked Arlene to expound upon some of the work she's done, because she works with Arlene hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, mayor and council, for this opportunity to recognize Carly Serrarino, or otherwise Carly Jean. So Carly came to us originally from our former city attorney, and has adopted very well into the administrative skills that we've also asked her to take on. She's learning CRS programs, NFIP programs, very quickly. Aida and her work closely together, but she's been amazing helping our procurement process, and especially as we move forward with all of these very well-needed grants, federal grants and funding. She's the one who makes sure that we're checking all the boxes correctly and legally, and then double-checking that with Derek as well. So her service to us has been invaluable. She also had the opportunity to stay with us at the fire district and helped keep us all calm during the storm. So congratulations, Carly. Thank you for being part of our team.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I, can I add a few more comments onto Carly?
Yes.
I've had the pleasure of working with Carly as well since, since coming on to join the city. You know, one of the things I like to say to both her and to the staff when they come in for the double, double-check questions, is that I have full faith in Carly. She's an excellent attorney. She's done a great job for the city, and more than anything, I trust her judgment. And that's, that's for everyone over there in Community Development who keeps asking over anyway.
Very good.
I just want everyone to understand, know that.
All right, very good. Thank you, Carly. Carly Jean. Serrarino, yeah, okay. Okay, consent agenda, is that where we are? Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Fulick.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas.
Aye.
Okay, mayor and council items. I've got a thing about these illegal stick-in-the-mud, snipe signs that show up all over town. We have a code enforcement that they're actually, the only ones allowed to pick up these signs that are illegally placed. Some of them block the view, make a dangerous situation. We've been trying to figure out what we could, how we can discipline these people, educate these people. Nail them to trees, and they're ridiculous. We have to, we own, we have to maintain the road right-ofways, we have to cut the grass. And if there's a sign there, we're not going to have the guy pull the sign out, cut the grass, put the sign back down. That's part of the reason that we, that there's an ordinance against it. I was hoping that if the sheriff's department sees somebody putting a sign in, that he could approach that illegal violator, and somehow we could put an end to all this stuff. Because this code enforcement picks up thousands of signs, and these people are not cheap, and they have something better to do than go around picking up these illegal signs. So again, I'd like the city attorney and the city manager to try and come up with some sort of solution to this situation.
Mayor, I think what you might be requesting is if you would like, we would help prepare a green sheet for the next agenda for some discussion, where staff could give some, some viewpoints of what we're able to do legally.
Yeah, we can give a presentation on, on the process, and what are, what, what options may be available, including nailing people to trees.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other council comments?
I'd like to just add something.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Quick on the switch here, yes.
Last night was a beautiful event. It was well-run, and our new council, I just believe that we're all going to work better together, that we are going to try to live up to the expectations and the hopes that the citizens of Benita Springs have instilled in us, and that we're going to move beyond our little petty differences and do the best for Benita Springs, so we can come back stronger, faster.
Okay. Anything else? It was a wonderful event last night, thousands and thousands of people. We want to bring more people downtown. I don't know where we're going to put them, but anyways, what a fabulous holiday in the park last night. Fantastic. Okay, 13A, public hearing, Mr. Rooney.
This is a, this is a public hearing to consider a petition by a property owner to vacate an adjacent utility right-ofway.
Oh, yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. For the record, J Suite with Community Development. Got to find the, where they put my presentation. So the property owner, that owns the property on the corner of Benita Beach Road and Lime Street on the northwest corner, they actually have two parcels, and there's an easement that goes between the parcel. This is the location where the parcel that they have, and they own the parcel immediately to the west. This is one though, that where the easement resides. The easement runs across the back there, and as they are coming with plans to redevelop, they'd like to relocate the power line that's in that easement. They have met with FPL, and FPL has agreed, as long as they pay to redo the relocation, they're happy to vacate that easement. Currently, FPL only uses a portion of it. This is just a little math that gives you a little bit better idea of where it is and the legal description, and it is, it's pretty simple. Would they, there's no objections. It is conditioned that the vacation becomes effective upon the removal and relocation of the existing utilities.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any members of the public who should speak on this item? Seeing none.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Fulick.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now 14A is capital improvement. This is necessary for us to approve. It's in, it's already in this year's budget, but we must have a formal approval of it. We don't need to discuss it.
Correct. This is, this is first reading of an ordinance of the city council of Benita Springs, Florida, adopting the 2022-2023 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program Annual Update, providing for legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for exclusion from codification, and providing for an effective date. This is a requirement of Chapter 163, that we update this every, every year to show what's in our five-year capital plan, and I believe there was a motion to approve from Councilman Forbes.
I'll second.
Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here. Yes, yes.
Councilman Corey.
Yes.
Councilman Fulick.
Yes.
Councilman Forbes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bogas.
Yes.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Very good.
Hey, Mr. Mayor and council, the next item is, I like to call this renewing of vows. After, after each election, we, new councils and panel, we, we re-adopt the administrative code provision on our code of conduct for the conduct of the council amongst themselves, amongst the public and the staff. It's required in our charter. It's just a matter for discussion. Each of you executes your acknowledgement, but there's no vote required, and if at this time you have any requests for changes to that code of conduct, that would be appropriate to, to raise at this time. Seeing none, I think we can move on to the next item. And the next item is another requirement after an election in our charter. This is the election of a deputy mayor.
I'd like to motion Fred Forbes to deputy mayor.
Second.
Okay.
Any comments? Roll call, please, Debbie.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Fulick.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Yes, I guess.
Councilwoman Bogas.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Very good, thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
If I'm healthy, you don't have to do anything. I'll be here. I'll be here for you. I might have to send you out of town a couple times. Thank you. Okay. Now we have an event at the poker room. I don't understand, we have to approve this because of so many people, is that?
No, sir. The reason why typically these are in consent agenda, or sometimes they're approved administratively, but they have requested for extended hours. The music will end at 9:00 PM, but the event is a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday till 11:00 PM. I do understand that last year, the event did occur. We did not receive any reports of complaints, but because of the extended hours, which is not typical of the event, it's brought to city council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? We are strictly enforcing the noise ordinance?
Correct. The music would be done at 9:00 PM.
How about the?
And the decibel set. And they have agreed.
They would be required to follow the city's noise ordinance, which does take an effect at 10:00 PM, where the decibel amount reduces at that point in time. But if there's outside noise created, or traffic nuisance, or other nuisance created, those reports will be recorded in the file for the application that comes next year if there's any concern. But we did not receive any complaints last year. You did permit extended hours last year, but it wasn't for the duration of days that they're asking this to.
There's any security or officer involved?
They're required to provide that information to Lee County Sheriff's Office that has a sign-off form that's given to the city, to the city, to the communications department to sign off on.
That's good. I'm glad to see something going on in a big field out there. Thank you. Motion to approve.
And we also have insurance, but that's okay. Roll call.
Councilman Fulick.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
The next item before you is also a special event, permanent. The reason that you're seeing this one is because it is on a city holiday. Christmas Eve is a paid city holiday. We do have a staff member who is willing to work the event, and the applicant recognizes that they will pay time and a half overtime for the applicant to work the event. We also need to bring it forward because it is We also need to bring it forward because it is turning off the music during a city event, which is the holiday stroll. If you recall, in 2020, due to COVID, we extended the Holiday in the Park program to have a holiday stroll so people felt comfortable coming at their own leisure. And we play music during the evening hours till 9:00 PM.
Okay. Is there any expense for lighting up the band shell or?
That's part of the city's special event process through the holiday season. We have provided those lights for quite a number of years during the whole holiday season.
Very good. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. And may I just point out that the, the event will be playing Christmas music during that time that they were stopping the music. They plan on playing Christmas music.
It's a church service, so I would imagine there's both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There.
Councilmember Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Boakess.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Okay, lobbying service.
Yes, the next item is for discussion regarding RFP 22-12, State Legislative and Executive Branch Lobbying Services. As you recall, our previous lobbyist, Carol Green, did retire. We properly advertised a request for proposals. You have four applicants. I do understand some of them might be here in attendance. They were also made aware that tonight would be for your discussion. We've provided a couple, number of options for you. We are prepared, should you wish to rank those this evening, we have ballot sheets for you to be able to do that. We're also prepared, should you wish to have a workshop to interview each of them individually, we would set up a workshop time to do that where you would be able to have a presentation by each applicant and then a question and answer period. Or you also have the option of rejecting all bids received.
Do I have the option of Gray Robbins as our pick tonight?
I would recommend that even if you have one that you're recommending, that you rank at least one or two so that you have the opportunity to fall back on another if a contract is not executed.
Could I?
Yes, Jesse.
Yes, sir. Just for a little bit of discussion on this, I think, before I get too deep, I would just say that it would probably be appropriate for us to do presentations simply because there are some issues, as I went through the packets, that I've seen from just being here for a while that have raised some issues for me. You know, one of the, one of the packets, and I don't have to get into it, was, you know, there's a member on one of the teams who's been a consistent flyer, pain in the butt to the staff, and I remember the name. You know, there's another one who, in my opinion, there's no other way to say it, but there's a direct conflict because they're an elected official in Collier County. So we have consistent issues. One specific issue with Collier County revolving water. That specific person has made commentary about our city in his county meetings. So I think maybe it's, it's one of the best groups, but with that specific individual on board, it feels as if there's a conflict. You know, I don't think he'd fault me for saying that because if he were in my seat, he'd probably say the same thing. So that, from a perspective standpoint, for y'all who haven't been here, we have an ongoing issue with Collier. They're on the other end of it. One of those people is one of the people on the teams. That presents an issue for me. And then I can say, one of the groups, I'm trying to think of the name, the water guy's one of the best in the state. He does stuff with Sanibel. He does stuff with Lee County. He's the former president of the Big Cypress Basin, which obviously affects us quite a bit. He's been the president of the South Florida Water Management District. When you see the good letters that Lee County and Sanibel does, Dan DeLeese is the team member who does that stuff. When I first came on council, we were going through the legislature, through this entire thing with the Big Cypress Basin, whether we should be a part of it or not. And he didn't know me from Adam and he explained hydraulic, hydraulically how this entire thing was supposed to work and how it wasn't working for us and broke that stuff down. He knows it better than anybody in the state. I can't speak for the other side of the operation, so that's why I'm saying presentations might be good. If the other side is as good as the water side, we would get a lot with that group. However, Rooney's group, awesome group. They're known in tally. That other, I forget the acronym, it's escaping me right now, but they're all over tally. They're a big group. They're known. Just because their folks aren't local doesn't mean they don't have the appropriate pull in Tallahassee. So I think, you know, having presentations in appropriate time to go over those little issues with each one would be good, but since we're not allowed to talk about it in any other venue, I had to point those out now so that you all who are new could understand that before voting on it. And additionally, I love, I love Rooney. He's a great attorney, right? We have, but here's the deal, we get Rooney anyways. So Rooney is still going to work with us and we're going to put our legislative priorities together. He's going to put him in a nice little box and then he's going to hand it to the lobbyist group that we pick. So if he's involved on this end or not, it is irrelevant because we're still going to have him. So that can't be the thing that does it. I'm not saying there isn't a lot under the hood for the rest of his team because there is, but point is, we're really truly going to have him either way.
Okay. Thanks, Jesse.
Things to think about.
Thanks, Jesse.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a, could I suggest having a workshop? We only have two presentations. People are here. They didn't know they were going to be making full presentations and I'd like to meet the people.
I don't think we should do it with all four.
Wait a minute, you're out of turn. Get started with this. As far as Bert Saunders is concerned, I've known Bert for like 30 years. He's an honest, straightforward man.
It has nothing to do with it.
Well, you just criticized him.
No, no, I criticize, okay. So do you understand what's going on with Collier County and Benita Springs right now? And if you do, then you understand.
I don't care what your opinion is.
Well, then you should. It's not an opinion, it's a fact.
It's hushing.
It's not an opinion.
Stop.
It's not, no, don't tell me to stop.
I'm the mayor, I'm the sheriff.
That's great. That's great. You have a vote just like I do. The point is, they have an issue that's ongoing with us. That is a fact. Talk to South Florida Water Management District.
I don't have this issue.
Not us, the city. Ask our attorney. Do we have an issue with Collier County right now with South, with South Florida Water Management District? Yes or no?
We're getting an issue with you.
No, it's not with me.
Again.
It isn't with me.
Mayor, Councilman Purdon, I recommend restraint on the level of the conversation here. What I would, what I would say is to the mayor's comments, Bert, in his role as a county commissioner for Collier County, is going to do, in that role, what he feels is best for Collier County. If that, if that raises concerns for the city of Benita Springs, which it has in the past, then I would recommend that that be addressed in any proposal. I'm not, I'm not the lead on that proposal. I am only identified in it as a point of contact, as I was with Carol Green, as something to work on, on issues. Mr. Carmody is here. You can ask him direct questions about Commissioner Saunders' involvement, if any. So I completely understand Councilman Purdon's objection and I don't think that it is a unwarranted question to ask. But I would recommend for the, for the, our renewal vows on the code of contact, that we go through the remainder of the council and get their comments on everything before taking an action.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, being as there's two of us that are new on council and these folks are going to be representing us in Tallahassee, I would certainly be comfortable we had just at least an interview process workshop. I'm sure, is that what we'd call a workshop?
We would call it a workshop, yes, and each of them would be invited to do a presentation and then you'd have an opportunity to ask questions and answers through the, and get answers for your questions.
That's why I would ask.
Wait a second, you have something, Fred?
Yeah, I would ask that we did the workshop, but work it out where maybe you adjourn and then come back and reconvene long enough to vote.
Oh.
Today.
What was that again, Fred?
What we would do is do the workshop, hear the interviews, then we would adjourn the meeting, take a break, they leave, we vote after we reconvene. So we don't lose, so we don't have to.
Do it at the same meeting.
Yeah, we, we could work.
Any other comments?
Sensible. Does that make sense to you?
Okay. So we agree on workshop? Is that what?
Yes, if you'll give us a chance, we'll look at the upcoming council meeting and how we can work the work, how we can be able to provide a workshop and then have a meeting so that you can make, make a decision as well.
Okay. Anybody in favor? We'll go. Thank you. What else we got here?
The next item is an informational item. As we typically do after the election, provide you with a list of the existing committees and the city committees, as well as the committees that you all act as liaisons upon. We provided you with the list of the former council members so you can see where there might be vacancies, but it also is appropriate for a shift among existing council members if there's a new interest or if someone would like to take something on. We're not asking for a decision on any of these committees tonight. This was a chance to introduce the item. Please take the opportunity to check with staff. We're happy to give you more information on those committees, give you information on when they meet regularly, scheduling. Also, if there is a liaison or a chair of a board that you're interested in, you would like us to put you in contact with in the interim, we can do that as well. Unless you have, unless there's something you'd like to move on, this was for informational purposes.
Any committees, some of them were affected by a quarterly meeting?
Correct. So at the, two council meetings ago, it was brought up by the former deputy mayor that unless it is a land sensitive issue, the land, making a decision on land use or affecting a property use, we are deferring till January, the advisory, the city advisory board meetings because that would allow your staff to put full attention to Hurricane Ian recovery.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Could we also evaluate the various committees and how much money we pay them and what services they actually provide?
Yeah, so what you're referring to is the external committees. So the internal committees, such as Art and Public Places, Historic Board, you already have that within your budget, but there is a line item in the city council budget items is your memberships. And so we could print that out for you so that you have that information, so you know what the membership fee, for example, Florida League of Cities, there's one for the local league, there's also one for the state league. There's other committees as well that you participate in, that you have funding for those committees.
And there's some I think we definitely need to look at. Charlotte Harbor, for example, who came at us as a city in writing when we were actually in a paying relationship with them. I don't see any need to keep them on the payroll, in my opinion. So I think there's some, there's some that we should look through, I think.
So we can bring that information back at the next meeting and then you all can, we can help walk through each committee and then you can decide amongst yourselves what your representation on those boards.
Thank you.
And then the last, I've got a couple of announcements and information to give you after we give a quick update on Hurricane Ian recovery. I would first like to start with, Matt just gave me a brief overview on the debris removal process.
Good evening. Just, it's actually fairly brief. We've moved about 228,000 yards of debris. It's at about 60-40 split where 40% of it is flood damage, 60% is vegetation, essentially. And really what's happened right, right prior to the Thanksgiving holiday is a lot of that flood damage has, you know, folks have cleaned out their homes. There's really nothing left to get back out to the street. So the rate of pickup has, has fallen off rapidly since right before Thanksgiving. The contractor will be on site and continue to pick up areas as material is generated. It's just not being generated at any appreciable rate currently through the new year. And then those operations will probably wind down pretty quickly in the January, February timeframe. They're already starting to haul out the, the material from Coconut Point. It will take a while, but that haulout's been going on for all three municipalities that are, or entities that are there ourselves, Lee County and, and the Village of Astero.
So the piles of sand and concrete and other things that weren't really hurricane debris on Hickory Boulevard, it's a Lee County road. So Lee County's going to smooth that out or do we have any? That's not debris. We're not paying for pickup debris.
We're not on the hook for, for those, those portions of Hickory Boulevard that aren't city maintained. There's a small piece, obviously, north of the Little Hickory Bridge that is a city maintained portion. But yes, Lion Share is, falls under Lee County's debris removal projects. The concrete, from my understanding, is being picked up. They've got it piled up on Coconut Point.
Could I ask a follow-up on that? What if on Hickory Boulevard, there's been damage done to someone's, you know, pavers, seawall? How does that work?
They really should, should call the folks at Lee County. They can forward it to us as well and we'll pass it along to the contractor and then they can, you know, make an evaluation as to what, if anything, can be done.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Fred.
Question. In the times I've been out there, the parking lots and it's all kind of broken up asphalt that are from parking lots, broken up concrete slabs from patios, lanai, maybe a pickleball court or whatever. Who picks that up?
It's, it's part of the disaster contract. As long as it's out in the right of way, it's being picked up.
Does the COA condo owner, do they have to pile it up for him?
They should take care of it themselves. If it's in the right-of-way, it will be addressed as part of the.
It's between the seawall and the right-of-way of the road.
If it's on private property, the private property owner typically handles it. They can get onto a state website if they don't have the means.
Okay.
And the state may be able to assist them. If it's placed in the right-of-way, it will be picked up as part of the storm debris project.
Okay, very good, yes.
Question for staff. I remember after Irma that we incurred additional expenses after the storm where large trees magically appeared by the side of the road that were not downed. It cost us a lot of money. Where do we draw the line and say, okay, after this point?
It's, it's being drawn as we speak. The everything is, every truck, you may not notice it, but every truck has a monitor that we're also paying that follows behind. And then with this storm, there's been an even larger presence of additional, non-compensated by the city, but, but through FEMA, additional monitors that are watching, they're watching the watchers, so to speak. And so, you know, one of the things that was discussed is, you know, green vegetation that starts showing up at this point in time. Unfortunately, you know, of course, there'd be some immediately after the storm where you get storm damage, you trim it, but at this point, this many months later, if there's green vegetative piles, they're not going to be picked up. But I don't think we've suffered from a lot of that this, this round with the storm.
There is a GPS picture of each site as it's happening and so everything is fully recorded because all of that documentation has to be provided through our, we're a subrecipient to the state and then to FEMA. So that would be part of all auditing, basically, lack of a better word, auditing materials that we have to have to be able to receive our reimbursements.
Yes, Chris. It was reported today in that Volusia County received a $5 million grant from Florida DEP for restoration of the sand and the sand dunes on their beaches. I was just wondering, has FDEP put out information that grant money is available for that?
No, what they've done is solicited regionally, they've solicited to understand what volume of sand was removed from the two storms, really. Nicole was not as appreciable, obviously, as Ian. And so that survey work has been conducted both by the city and the county and turned into the state, I think, for, you know, future discussions along those lines.
They're cleaning up the sand. Is that sand available for public consumption? It has to go back out on the beach?
I wouldn't...
Well, it's part of the county's project and we've talked to them about that, but they will be screening the sand and placing it at the public beach accesses. They really haven't made any final determinations beyond that. I don't believe they will be placing any sand on private property.
Okay.
Which is a large, a large portion of the beachfront, so, you know, the sand will, it'll depend on the volume. I know it looks like a large pile, but when you start to screen it and place it at the beach accesses, it may not be very much anyway.
I got one heck of a pile left over. About where there's the big holes where it washed out, can they, what they're gonna put in there, anything they...
If it's on private property, the county is not, at this point, addressing that issue.
And some of the beach accesses have been washed out real deep, too.
If the beach accesses, they will be screening and placing sand.
Okay. Come along, we're getting there. We're storming 100 years or better. Yes, any other comments?
Just one more comment. You know, FDEP is charged with postal responsibility for the sand dunes as the first line of defense. But I recognize that they've got over 800 miles of beaches to take care of. Is there any indication FDEP is looking at replacing the sand dunes in Benita Beach?
All I know is they asked for volumetric calculations, which we commissioned the same survey company that's used kind of here regionally that we've used in the past, and we've provided volumetric calculation, I suspect, for future discussions along those lines. I assume it's tied to funding that's not even identified at this point, so, you know, we'll have those discussions. One of the issues that is certainly going to happen is you have a beach project that has easements at the north end of the island, and then you have no authorized or critically eroded areas identified by the state south of there. And so I'm sure the private property issue is something we're going to be facing with those issues in the future.
We also wanted to advise that your staff is participating in the disaster advisory committee. That is under the ordinance and the emergency programming of Lee County. So representing, representing will be each of the municipalities. Also available to any entity that is eligible for the federal funding of the local mitigation strategy, those folks will be participating. That includes utility companies as well, fire districts as well. So that is the staff process of ranking the forthcoming funds. A number that was given out that is very much subject to change is around 500 million for Lee County, but as a total to be distributed amongst all of us. But that does require a 25% match, the same exact process that we went with Irma, that would have to be funded out of the city's budget. One of the items that came up today at the legislative delegation that I also commented on is that we are hopeful that the state would be able to assist us with any matches of the LMS program so that we can bridge that funding gap that we would receive for that 25%. We did participate in the legislative, Lee County legislative delegation this morning. Our notes were that the city of Bay of Springs supports legislation and policy that encourages and promotes the city's recovery from Hurricane Ian by providing increased funding, technical assistance, economic development opportunities, and sustainable resiliency. We also requested that they develop opportunities for revenue replenishment, especially in regards to the comments of the governor's request that there might be dispensation for those who have been in structures that have been inhabitable for one quarter of ad valorem taxes, that the local governments be made whole. So we also, we also made that request as well. We will continue to look at the home elevation and home buyout program that we have. We have had brief discussions with Lee County about the berm in the South Lee watershed plan. They may be asking the city to support some of their legislative requests for that, which would directly help us. It's one of the projects that we have also identified as one of our priorities as well.
Anything else, Fred?
Well, I would like somebody to ask the county, what are they gonna do with the water they hold behind the berm? What's their plan for it? Because if you put a berm there and the sheet flow comes, which it does, it's gonna create a big...
They'll hold it in the swamp, which needs some rehydration. It's a project that they looked at as part of their suite of projects that came out of Hurricane Irma. I'm sure there's more design work that would need to be done, but the concept was to hydrate. And when we, when they talk about a berm, they're not talking about a 20-foot-tall earthen embankment. I think they're talking something on the order of like three or four feet.
You hold a lot of water.
I also want to advise that Lee County is working with each of the municipalities to develop a conservative understanding of what the potential loss in revenue might be. I understand that Matt Caldwell has prepared some numbers based on what he believes might become effective. So Lee County staff has asked us for some of our information as well. They've also asked what other anticipated revenues beyond ad valorem that we might see where there might be a gap as well. So we're continuing to work through that.
Arlene, what is that for? Okay, so the list, the prioritization...
What was that? Mr. Mayor?
The list?
Did you say Mr. Mayor?
No, I did not say Mr. Mayor. I did not.
You're supposed to ask me.
No, I didn't. I asked a question.
Please ask me before you speak.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for our city attorney. Are you good with that?
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Please do that next time. Thank you.
I don't even know where we were at.
You were asking, what was it? There's two processes going on. One is the, the city is a designated participant in the disaster advisory committee. That's our projects, the LMS projects that we list. We've got a request from Lee County to look at our lost revenue. And that would be something that they would be using to go up to the legislature with to discuss.
The reason I'm asking, I'm asking, is this for this task force or is this for Lee County?
Lee County staff made the request of us.
Okay. Because there are issues with this task force. I can wait till council member items to discuss, but there are some of those that I think we need to go over.
I understand there's a group already getting prepared to lobby in Tallahassee for lost revenue or replenished revenue.
Okay.
And that's what I understand that this request is from. It went to all the cities and also asking if we can identify other, for example, if there's any lost park revenue based on parks not being able to be utilized or rental fees, building permit fees that may have been reduced or planning and zoning fee, any type of fees that we might anticipate besides ad valorem that we could have received a reduction from because of response to Hurricane Ian.
Okay. Anything else there, my dear?
I do have a couple non-recovery, Ian recovery items. We would like to ask your consideration in canceling the January 4th meeting. The preparation of the packet would need to occur the week after Christmas. It's only a three-day working week. What we could do is if there was an impending item or a land use item, if we needed to, we could ask you to schedule that the following week. But the fourth would be a little bit challenging for staff for advertising purposes and for getting information from our consultants as well.
People need to take vacation, too, don't they?
We do have a lot of staff that was asking for that time, yes.
Make a motion. Do we make a motion or...
I think we have direction, if you're comfortable, and if there's a need, we will contact each of you and we would schedule a meeting the following week if we needed to address a land use issue because we don't want to keep any of those pending. We wanted to remind everyone, we have rescheduled the evaluation and appraisal report workshop, the EER workshop is rescheduled for January 10th at 5:30 PM at City Hall. The survey that we also have for citizens to take is still live and online as well. Each of you, we're coordinating to have individual meetings. We're picking back up the Gateway Collaborative Signage Plan, so each of you is getting requests for a meeting to give you an update on that as well. And then once we're able to do that, we'll be scheduling a workshop as well. And that includes not only the entryway signs, it was the features for all parks as we, as we transition or a sign becomes outdated, we would update it, as well as street signs, the question that we receive regarding public roads and private roads, the identification of those and placemaking as well. That also includes an expedited report where we're looking at the intersection of Imperial Parkway and Benita Beach Road at what we might be able to do there as an, as an entryway feature as well.
So nothing to do with stop signs or...
As you say...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Well, you read the thing, you talk about...
I was just reading my own notes, I'm sorry. May I ask a question?
Can you control yourself? Go ahead, please. Been doing this for four years now.
Nothing to do with, nothing to do with stop signs or...
Well, what I would suggest that is, so as we've worked, some of the, not stop lights, but what it would be is some of the signage, for example, in the downtown, the framework's a little bit more ornate, that's a little bit more expensive. What we've talked about is how that breaks out into the side streets as well, as closest to the downtown, have implementing different programs. And what we do is it's based on the life of the sign. We're not gonna just start taking all the signs up in the city. It's as, a sign is ripe for replacement, you have a plan then set for how that replacement sign would look and how we bring that out into the neighboring streets and communities. One of the questions we've always had consternation on is, is it a public road or private road? We've talked about identifying those with either a logo or a symbolism, but also the concern that everything we do be consistent so that the messaging is consistent as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
And then the last item I just had is Representative Botana has asked myself and Matt to participate with all the other city managers tomorrow for a meeting to discuss the upcoming legislative priorities as well. So we'll be in attendance, so it's a staff meeting with the representative and some of the other representatives, I think, and senators she's inviting as well.
Okay, well, thank you for representing us this morning up in Fort Myers, is that right? That was, what was that again?
The Lee County delegation meeting.
Very good. I saw 45 different entities to speak.
Correct.
We're luckily number 11. We got in and we were able to get down here. Well, thank you so much for your effort. Mayor and council reports? Yes, Jesse?
I can go first. Let's start with congratulating our new members. I'm looking really forward to working with both of you and Laura again, obviously. I think we're gonna do big things and I'm really excited to have you guys aboard. Despite some of the little snip in you see here and there, we don't, we all do work together. And I think we're headed for a really big year next year with some of the things we put in place for last year. So I'm looking forward to having you guys here for part of that. I wanted to address the task force. You might have heard there's a task force that Lee County is putting together. I would just ask that, you know, before we get any farther along the line, that we ask some questions to the county that I have, specifically because I watched the task force meeting a day ago and I saw that they used not only our logo, but they also chose a member from the, and actually the member, I'm perfectly fine with who they chose. What I'm not okay with is them selling something as if the city has signed off on the jurisdiction of this committee at all to begin with, used our logo, then picked a person, when those are all things that we do as a city functionality-wise. So I don't think it was appropriate. Further, you know, this has been sold as something the governor's office has wanted. I've reached out to the governor's office and that's not what I've heard. So I'd love to see how that started. Additionally, you know, an estimate on staff time, because the reality is, we are a government-light city and the staff that we have is already currently in works with the associated county, state, and federal agencies recovering from the disaster. So if we're taking them out of the field to go to a meeting for an organization that is already coming up with logos and marketing but has no set jurisdiction on what they actually do, it's reminiscent of, if y'all remember something called the RPC, I'm still a member, the Regional Planning Council, feckless organization that essentially fell apart because there's no teeth, because nobody's actually in charge. I feel like we're, these are state legislative issues, this is more Representative Botana's issues than what we're trying to tackle on a county level. And maybe I'm wrong, I don't want us to not be at the table, because heaven forbid if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. We all know that. But as far as duplicative efforts, I'm not a fan. So I would like to see what it is that this organization is actually gonna do and who it is, what type of actual jurisdiction, authority this body would actually have before we end up sending our best and brightest, who are in the process of actually working on this, to a meeting that may or may not do anything. So if the governor's office asks questions, I've talked to state legislators who are curious why this is not on their plate and it's now on the county's, this is a subcommittee of the county that has the authority to make suggestions to the county itself. So us giving them a bunch of lists of things that we want, priorities, and, you know, everybody coming to the table and walking around to go to press conferences is great, but the reality is, our people are already working on this stuff. So what is the point of us being in this organization and what are we doing? What is the buy-in? If they're already doing marketing and buying stuff for it and setting up meetings at fancy places downtown to talk about it and having press conferences about it, is there a budget for this? Are we gonna be asked to put in money for this thing that's supposed to be getting us money? So I have a lot of questions and I don't like the presumptive behavior of putting us on something and selling it as if we were prior to talking to us. So I think if the county answers those, I would be good. And the last thing I would say, you know, I don't want to single anybody out, but I would say, when we're addressing our city attorney, I'd like to address her by her name. I don't think it's appropriate to address her as my dear or anything else along those lines. And it's happened consistently a number of times. City manager, I'm sorry. I call Rooney my dear sometimes, but that's different, that's different.
I was Dave Carley.
But I feel, I feel, you know, if we're gonna go here, councilman, Mr. Mayor, I think it's appropriate that, city manager or Ms. Hunter or Arlene is appropriate. If you want to call her my dear on your private time, you know, still not appropriate, but definitely up here, not appropriate. So I would ask that all members consider that moving forward. Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to concur with some of what Jesse said in that this task force seems to be duplicating and what is the hook and what is gonna be the catch? Because I'm afraid that some of these environmentally focused are then gonna come and say, you're now committed to X amount of money because you participated. So I'm very leery of this group as well. I'm not sure what the purpose is. And I still think we all need to take a deep breath and remember, we want to get along. We really want to try to get along and relax and, you know, get back into asking permission from the mayor before we begin talking. That's your, that's what you want.
That's what it says in this.
Okay. You don't have to be so grouchy, but that's another point, we can talk privately. But anyway, just, just really try to work for our city. So many people are stressed enough, they don't need to see bickering and division and divisiveness with their council that says they want to help move, you know, us to a stronger and better Benita. So let's really try. You know, take a deep breath before you respond, you know, like your emotions are too quick. So we all inhale before we jump on one another, maybe. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else gonna criticize me tonight? I'll take all the blame for everything the city's ever done wrong. Now be quiet.
I wasn't criticizing you.
You weren't?
No.
What were you talking about? You were over here pointing at me.
I wasn't.
I don't know, let's forget about it.
I talked with my hands and you happen to now be right here. No criticism. You're doing a great job. You're trying.
Okay, well, we all gonna try and get along here. Speaking out of turn or without addressing the chair is just, we have the rules and regulations says it goes through the mayor. And I appreciate that because otherwise we get, you know, bickering and carrying on and debate and stuff. This is not a debate club. This is not the View or whatever. So we'll work on it, we'll work on it. Sorry, Jesse, I didn't mean to get you upset. We'll work on it. We're on a new, got a new group of people and we've got a new year. And the last two years were nothing compared to what we got going on now with the, with the storm and the recovery and everything. So it's a land of opportunity. Thank you. Yes, Russ?
Well, to Jesse's point, by whatever way it happened, you know, I heard one story and then I heard another story. I went to the meeting with the state legislators at the Luminary Hotel on Monday, and I would just like to give a report of what happened at that meeting. And, you know, whatever council decides they want to do, this is just a report. I didn't, I didn't take any position on anything, although I did get a little terse at a couple of points. But let me just tell you who was there. This thing, well, let me start by saying, I don't know how this thing was organized. I was in a, it turned out I was in a 12:45 PM to 1:30 group. Now, there was another group meeting ahead of us. And when we got done with our group, there was another group meeting behind us. So in this particular group I was in, the legislators were Mike Grant from Port Charlotte, who's the majority leader of the House. who's the Majority Leader of the House, and Bob Rommel from Naples, who's the Chair of the House Commerce Committee. County Commissioners Ruwan was there, as well as Brian Hammond, he was also in this group, and former State Senator Liz Benecuesto was in the group. Now, from the public side, I'll call it the public side, you had Sandy Stillwell-Yonquist, who's with Stillwell Enterprises and Restaurant Group, she's got about five restaurants, Dominic Camerati, Chief Financial Officer and co-owner of Camerati Companies, which is a full-service real estate development company, and he seemed to be focused on Corkscrew Road, East of 75, and then Matt Holliday, the Director of Governmental Relations for NCH Healthcare System. I was in the meeting as the only person from a city. I raised a question about it, you know? I was told by Commissioner Ruwan that all cities are now part of this group, as well as any major, I don't know how to say this right, any governmental entity of any size is receiving avalorum taxes, as well as major employers such as, all the major employers, Lee Health, Hertz, and so forth. So they're trying to get a broad spectrum of people. And the purpose of the meeting is to inform legislators of hurricane recovery concerns of Lee County government, cities in Lee County, major governmental bodies relying on avalorum taxes, and major employers. So let me just say how this thing started. Hammond talked about the impact of hurricane on tax revenues. That was his big thing. Stillwell talked about a good plan needed to reopen Sanibel to shoppers and tourists. Holliday talked about the need for workers to find a secure place to live while continuing to work, you know, for NCH. Camerati talked about the needs to work on drainage, to drainage canals east of I-75 and off Corkscrew Road. I have no idea what those issues are. And Benecuesto was there basically to talk about the impact of the hurricane on Fort Myers Beach. So the only thing I talked about, and which I'm really concerned about, is the impact of hurricane on people, people trying to work, trying to restore their homes, having to transport kids to school because they're not living where they used to, and trying to pay mortgages and rents at the same time. And I wish that FEMA would hurry up, and if there was anything the state could do to help, that would be wonderful. But Majority Leader Grant pointed to FEMA and local governments as the ones needed to find solutions to the concern. He emphasized, this is not going to come from Tallahassee. If you want Orlando, one quote, if you want Orlando taxpayers to pay to rebuild a school on Fort Myers Beach, that's a hard sell. Rommel points to the FEMA 50/50 rule as something cities need to focus on, because otherwise, people are not going to be able to rebuild if they can, if they can restore their home, but have to spend 51% instead of 49%. Is that going to, is that going to be a problem? I just said that I thought people are going to do whatever they have to do to restore their property, if that means they're going to use unlicensed contractors and not getting permits. That's what will happen, which will just create more problems for community development and COVID enforcement. Rommel said there might be areas where there could be partnerships between local governments and the state. Grant, though, seemed to disagree. His view is more along the lines of, will whatever help we give generate sales taxes to pay back the state, the help the state provides? In other words, he wants a return on the investment. And Camerati asked what the low-hanging fruit that the legislature could address. Grant said there is no low-hanging fruit from the state's viewpoint. Communities need to figure out the solutions, and local government needs to figure out how to implement those solutions. Grant says the focus of local governments and legislatures' views should include affordable housing, need workers to operate working businesses generating sales taxes. Another one is beaches, because that attracts tourists and generates sales taxes, and public restoration projects like the railroad bridges over some river, Matt, that evidently...
East River, over...
Whatever, needs repaired to support commerce, which also generates sales taxes. So Grant's all about sales taxes. Now, something that might be addressed is school funding, which is driven by the number of students. Some students will disappear because of the hurricane, but there might be funding for schools, assuming 100% of the number of students before the hurricane for a short time, maybe a year or two. This was done after Irma. Hammond got back to say Southwest Florida, I sort of enjoyed this, Southwest Florida is a donor region to the state coffers. Lee County needs some of the money back, but this was shot down by Grant. Grant looks at help in terms of return on investment, or the investment returns sales taxes. I previously talked about that. He goes, he went on to talk about the mistake Punagorda made by limiting height of buildings in downtown and only having an empty lot to show for it. In his mind, this is a terrible decision, but that sort of seemed to me like Charlotte County inside baseball. I mean, I don't know what that had to do with what we were talking about. And so I brought up the problem with FEMA paying back, needing, we need to get FEMA funds rolling. I mentioned that where I live, in a tower in Benita Bay, we work through Brown and Brown Insurance Agency. They insure a number of towers in Lee County, Collier County, Charlotte County. And I asked them on Monday before I went to the meeting, are there any towers damaged in the hurricane that have received any FEMA money? And not one tower in all three counties has received anything for their damages. I subsequently found out later, when I got back, that the lady that represents Senator Scott's office in Naples had, at a request I made, contacted Washington to find out what she could on behalf of Senator Scott, what's holding up the funding. She called back and said she had nothing good to report, and the only thing she was really told was that they're still paying out Irma claims. So, you know, the, which gave me some pause to think about, well, when are they going to pay the advance to the city that's been requested, and, you know, how are we going to handle that? Are we, are we going to get this line of credit going, or are we going to have to defer some CIP? Hammond said the tax revenue issues are critical local government. How long are taxes going to be delayed? According to the governor's emergency declaration, the legislature basically said, it's not our issue. We're not going to take it up in special session. If you need, the only suggestion was, if you need a, this is a quote, if you need a project to build a culture center, you might want to delay it for five years. So in effect, they're saying, you know, if you need money, look to your CIP and re-prioritize it. That, interestingly, Hammond left the meeting at that point. I asked that Grant and Rommel contact the governor's office, they asked for a definition of uninhabitable property, if you read the emergency order. It talks about that, and that is evidently not tied to the FEMA definition. And, you know, my understanding is that Caldwell is analyzing this under various scenarios of what uninhabitable means, but there are people I know that were in a house that got flooded, they've lost their kitchen, they've lost their downstairs bathrooms, they went, rented someplace thinking they would get money, they were renting for two months subsequent, got no money, and they found out they couldn't pay rent and pay a mortgage at the same time because the mortgage obligations were, so anyway. I just asked, can you at least clarify that? Because, you know, that would allow Caldwell to figure out what straps he's going to use to figure out the, how much avalorum taxes are going to be held up to be received by the cities. Grant and Rommel both stated that unfortunately, there will be people that can't afford to reconstruct their property and will have to move. That's just their look, their way they look at it. Rebates of property taxes related to property totally wiped out was not discussed at the meeting. They're not going to take that up in a special session either. So, I mean, that was basically the end of the meeting. Summary is that the legislators believe it is the job of communities to determine the path forward towards recovery, and the job of local governments to figure out how to do it. Do not look at the state to figure it out, or to be the source of finances. Bring the state-specific things you want the legislature to look at, and the specific language needed in bills to address them. Requests for financial help should show the return on investment for the state in terms of reimbursing the state treasury via sales taxes. Exception might be the school district. So I left the meeting saying to myself, well, what the hell is this all about? Pardon my French. And so I did some research, and I don't know if this is on point or not, but back after Irma, you know, DeSantis got elected, and there was this $91 million that was passed out to a list of 20 or 25 cities. And the way that the, I don't know if it was a press release or whatever was written, you assumed it was state money, but it got down to the final paragraph, and what it was, was a distribution by the state of money that they got from HUD. And so it listed all these cities. The only thing that occurred to me is, you know, that somehow the county has now looked at this and said, they needed to play a role in that, and that, you know, they, my fear is that, you know, there's going to be this distribution to these cities, but the county might want to be another cog in the wheel. In other words, it gets distributed by the state to the county, and the county will make the distribution to the cities within, say, Lee County, or whatever. So I just, you know, I'm not sure where this thing goes. But that's my report. So I'll be glad to continue to go. I think, as Jesse said, you know, we got to have a seat at the table, because we got to figure out what's really going on, and we got to have a way to express our concerns. But that's what I took away from the meeting.
Well, thank you, Chris. That's a quite comprehensive report, and I do appreciate that. And we're all learning that a lot of people have lots of ideas, but there's only so much money to go around. I think you're buying up short chains everywhere, that this is going to be the most expensive disaster this country's ever seen, but that's, I hope I'm wrong. Yes, Fred, do you have a comment?
I was just going to ask, Chris, when, when do you think, how often does this group meet?
Well, what I, there was some, I guess my real contact on this is Benecuesto. I mean, she seems the one that is easiest to get information out of. My understanding is that this task force is going to meet monthly. I don't, I have no knowledge of when the next meeting is, but as this thing, because I think this is sort of being designed on the go up at the Luminary Hotel.
And she's a paid lobbyist on this project, just so everybody understands, for perspective. Lizbeth Benecuesto is a paid lobbyist on this.
So, but anyway, it was said they were going to meet monthly and go through, through this thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One follow-up. Maybe, why don't you ask them if there's any way that a week or so before they're going to meet, some of the main topics could be sent to you?
Yeah.
And you could distribute that to the council, and if any of us have comments, questions, or suggestions of something you might bring up, it'd be more productive, I would think.
And Mr. Mayor, could I add, could you also ask, how are you not duplicating what we're already doing, and we're doing it more efficiently and more focused on Benita Springs, which is where I believe we need to stay focused?
I think that's, I think that's right, but, you know, I go back to my, my days of working as a CPA and an audit partner, and when you always got confused, what you ended up trying to do was follow the cash. And I think that's what I'm focused on. Where's the cash, so costs come from, and who's going to get their hands on it before it comes down to Benita Springs? So I got two questions, really. I'd like to understand how this thing is being organized, how these meetings are going to be organized, what the agenda is, because there was no distribution of an agenda before the meeting. And, you know, how many groups are meeting with the legislators? And is it going to be a free-for-all, or are we going to go into these breakout sessions going forward?
I have a comment. How does one person, I mean, he's done a good job, but how does one person represent the city, but in the Springs? We have seven people up here that have a say what goes on with the city. I appreciate you going and doing this, you know, absolutely, but you understand what I'm saying?
Mr. Mayor, can I explain? Mr. Mayor, it wasn't, when I was bringing it up, and I purposely, I didn't say Chris's name in case people didn't see it. It wasn't his fault, because apparently Commissioner Ruane stated that he spoke to you, and you was, okay, and he stated that you weren't interested, and that you didn't care who went. So then he reached out to Councilman Corey instead of reaching back to Arlene. So then Councilman Corey went, and then he took the liberty of taking our logo and Councilman Corey's thing and putting it on his presentation as if we were actually signed into it, though we didn't go through the process, which was why I was, procedurally, it was inappropriate. And it put him in a bad spot, and he didn't give them the blessing to do it. So yes, he went, but it wasn't his fault.
He didn't talk to me, number one.
That's good.
This is Ruane.
Ruane didn't talk to him.
Ruane didn't talk to me.
Good to know, because he said he did.
But Chris talked to Arlene.
Mr. Mayor, what I would recommend, based on the comments we've seen so far, is that at this point, you appoint Councilman Corey on an interim basis to continue to represent the city and bring back information, and maybe, in following up to Councilman Corey's own questions, receive some form of organizational or agenda for these continued meetings before the city formally sort of buys in.
Or even bothers going.
And I would recommend we make that appointment at this meeting now, so that there's at least some authority.
Chris, if I may ask a question, you were the only, or we were the only municipality that was represented?
In this, in this one breakout group.
So my question would be, what other municipalities have attended? And it almost seems like there's a new entity that's being created.
There is.
Who created the entity? I'd like to know who that is, because it sounds like dollars, not they're going to be funneled off, but they could be.
Well, I will say, let me, as I understand it, this arises from Hurricane Michael and the impact on Mexico Beach and whatever the name of that county is.
Bay County.
Uh?
Bay County.
Bay County. And what Bay County did was produce a report that covered all the entities, major entities in Bay County, the impact of that, the Hurricane Michael on that county, and produced a 300-page report that they then took somewhere, I'm not sure I know, because I haven't seen that report, but Ruwan is taking, using that as a template to, in effect, replicate what Bay County did after Hurricane Michael and trying to, he thinks it is an efficient and effective way of getting money, getting relief into Lee County from Hurricane Ian. That's about all I know at this point. So I have...
The only way I see it is, I see another unelected group of people deciding what the cities can do.
Yep.
If somebody's overruled, what we, it's our responsibility. This is, what's this, resilience fund? That's another group that's unelected that's going to tell us what to do. We got to hang on to our home rule, as far as I'm concerned. Any other comments? You all right?
Is there, yeah, is there any support for, for Councilman Corey to continue on with this group?
I don't know if you really want to put up with this.
Well, I'm more than happy to do it.
But I was not asked. I would have turned it down because of the things I just said. This is, you know, they want to circumvent everybody else.
I recommend, you know, if there's...
To get, to get...
There's different opinions on the council about... There's different opinions on, on the council about involvement. I think we should make a decision now, at least as to whether, you know, Councilman Corey has some essentially, you know, imperator of authority to go to these meetings on behalf of the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think it would be appropriate if Chris would like to go back, but to go back with a list of, hey, here are the issues and why would we want to do this? And if you can, if you can talk to me, then fine, but if not, you know, tell us the benefit. Explain it to us. Because I mean, if we, if you just go, if you just go but don't say anything, then it's like them using our logo again. You're there, so, oh, Chris Corey's the guy and we're, we're there, so Benita agrees. So if you're going to go, we have to bring up the issues. If you don't go, that speaks volumes and we can communicate through staff. I think either way works.
I say the latter, but that would be my, you know.
Either way.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, but I wouldn't.
Is there, is there a motion to have Councilman Corey continue to attend?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
I, I disagree because I don't think any one person can represent the city, Benita Springs. Maybe the city manager, assistant city manager, that have the authority to speak for the city. I don't have the authority to speak for the city.
That's why I'm recommending, Mr. Mayor, that we, we vote on it because it seems that there are diverged views. So the motion and the second that are, that are available is to have Councilman Corey continue to attend, but to provide, to request essentially, I'll say articles of incorporation, but the mission statement of this group and report back to the city council.
Why don't you just put a tape recorder and report and listen to the tape recorder? Because he, he can't, one person can't represent the city. So how, you know, he, he's going to go up there and.
If we voted.
But Mr. Mayor, he's the liaison.
Do what?
There's a motion and a second on, on the floor. Are there any additional comments?
My, my only comment would be, Mr. Mayor, is that if Chris goes up there, we all know he's bright enough to sit there and take it all in. He's not going to commit anything on our behalf, but I would love to have somebody there, whether it's staff or Chris, that can come back to us and say, this is what's going on.
And the, I think staff definitely should communicate some of our concerns because if they're saying that they reached out to the mayor and they didn't, that's not appropriate. So we need to work on that. And then also, as far as Chris goes, unfortunately, as a pawn, the problem is they picked him. So now if we send him, they're getting exactly what they wanted. But, so it's like, you know, you can't win here.
Yeah, they picked him out of, how about the other six?
You can't, well, I think he's capable. It's just the process, though. They, they ignored the process and now we're giving them what they want. They ignored, they circumvented the process and now we're going to give them what they want by participating with the person they want. So it's like, it's a.
And furthermore, it's nebulous. What is the, what's the mission statement? So, there's a motion and a second. I say without a mission, mission statement, intent, and what the actual goal is and how they're going to assist Benita Springs in recovery from Ian, then we limit ourselves and we focus on Benita Springs. We don't need to spend the energy.
Mr. Mayor, I, I understood that this was an interim thing we were doing and it was actually to get a little more information and that Chris is not authorized to agree to anything. He's gathering information, he's bringing it back to us. At the next meeting, when he reports to us, we may say, that's it, we're pulling the.
Well, but Mr. Mayor, I, I think what Jesse's saying is that by using our logo and having you, you go there, you legitimize the purpose of the agenda they have, which we don't know what the agenda is.
Yeah, yeah. In my opinion, this, the county commissioner is headstrong, is that a way to put it?
Mr. Mayor, but don't I?
You know, if he said, how did you know? He did not call me. Now, Arlene came to me and, and he, he, he was supposed to call me. What I was told.
No, I, I was advised that each of the mayors were being reached out to, so I did confirm with you, sir, if you had received a call.
And I had not.
Mr. Mayor, that was my question. My question is, is, like Fred said, I'm understanding this as you're just going to find out what this is about. Find out the agenda, come back at our next meeting and then we decide, do we continue or do we not? Let's, if we're missing something that somebody should possibly be there for, but we have to find out what it's about. If we don't know what it's about, we need to send somebody to find out, I feel, what it's about and what it's standing for and what the agenda is. If we don't know that, we can't, I mean, we don't know what's going on.
Okay, well, let's vote on this motion.
Councilwoman Bocas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Foulak?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Passes four two.
Four, four two?
I'm, five two, I'm sorry. Five two, five two.
Five two. Okay, well, I think Chris understands what we're, what we're saying here.
Yep.
It's kind of a picking of folks or something like that.
Well, they give you lunch.
All right. Yeah, well, you did a good job covering that anyways. I appreciate that. Okay, any more reports? Fred?
Yeah, I've got something. It's actually a motion and it's going back, doubling back to a conversation that we had probably two meetings ago. What I'm asking is for city staff to investigate the need of no-through trucks on Old 41 corridor. Now that, with three understandings on that. Number one, they'll look at, they'll use traffic study information that they have. Two, nothing would be recommended that would in any way impede delivery to either residents that receive something from trucks or businesses, anything like that on the corridor, because you can't cut, can't cut the people off and you can't cut off the residents of the businesses. In addition to that, they would work closely with Lee County Sheriff's Office because if they did recommend that something be done, wave an ordinance, it's got to be something they can live with and they can enforce, but be effective. Now, at the same time, my motion also says explore a couple other things about the corridor. Explore doesn't mean spend money, means think about it, talk about it. Is there ways to enhance pedestrian walkability? Is there a way of enhancing bike ability improvements on the corridor? And then I made a couple suggestions, which would be, one, consider the possibility of on the other streets east of the corridor, like Phelps, so on, put a bike lane in there because those streets aren't as heavily traveled. And then on the cross streets, not necessarily all of them, the ones that go east to west, consider putting a bike lane on some of those so that if you wanted to avoid the traffic on the corridor, and there is traffic, then you could go over to one of those other streets with less traffic or not get up on the sidewalks, which is not.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
What's the point of?
Could we get a green sheet on this? This, you're making a motion and you're getting into very specifics, so could you bring it up at the next meeting with a green sheet?
I could. I thought, I thought I explained it, but if everybody would prefer, I think we need to get on with it, but we could do it. I don't have a problem with that. Everybody's complaining about the truck traffic. They're going to work with the Sheriff's Department and they're going to use traffic study data that we've collected, so. If that's your pleasure, I'm happy to.
Yeah, why don't we investigate this and have staff work on it?
We all are on the same page with, you know, having a walkable downtown, but you're throwing this out and it's just, there's nothing in writing and you're using all sorts of stipulations and bike trails and how are we going to, you know, is there funding for that? And it's just, you're, it needs to be in black and white.
I used the word carefully, discuss, consider, we're not obligating or something. If any of these things make any sense and they have ideas themselves, we would bring them back to us, but we can wait to vote on it next meeting if you want to.
Okay, well, we do have a capital improvement budget for five years. I don't think anything comes near to what you're talking about. Okay, anybody else have a report?
If I would just, I just wanted to thank everybody up here in the dais and I wanted to say something about staff. I've worked with a lot of these folks over the years, but just the last couple of weeks in the orientation. And I was really reminded last night at the holiday, what our staff does, they wear all these different hats. And I can't tell you, there was probably half of those of you that came up to me and said, thank you, because that sense of normalcy that last night brought back to our community.
Oh, it was gorgeous.
Arlene and Matt and your staff, you're responsible for that. And I see Nicole Perino sitting out there in the audience. I know she does a few things now and then too, but I just think they did a phenomenal job.
Yeah, and 20, 26 parks to take care of, we say. Okay, ready to adjourn?
Yes.
Public comment.
Are you ready?
Public comment.
Public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think Jamie got a chance to speak yet, Mr.?
She was asked. I want to thank everyone too. I, every one day is really welcoming me with open arms here and the staff has done an amazing job. As we all know, this is a whole new adventure for me and I, so I really appreciate everybody welcoming me and last night was an amazing event and I really enjoyed it. And seeing every, all the kids running around and the families all there really was, really neat to see. So, thank you, everybody.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You fresh face.
Is there any?
Public comment? Anybody else have something to say? Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Welcome, Jamie. Welcome, Nigel Foulak. Happy Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Feliz Navidad. My name is Teri Lemain. I'm the CEO and Executive Director of the Benita Springs Assistance Office. And I just want to especially thank Ellie, who is our Senior Projects Manager for our Public Works Department, for reaching out in April to make sure that our city was awarded a half a million dollars in food insecurity grants. At November 16th meeting, I came here in front of you, Mr. Mayor, and your council and your city staff and city manager, to thank everybody for awarding the Benita Springs Assistance Office $70,000 that started on November 17th, the day after your last meeting. I want all of our residents, I want you, Mr. Mayor, and I want everybody at city staff and city council to know, we provide a hand up, not a handout. You have hardworking residents of this community making $14 and $15 an hour, paying $3,000 a month rent. It's a bad time after Hurricane Ian, but it's also a bad time with our inflation, as all the educated people in our community know. It's COVID funds we're utilizing and I'm working very closely with city staff member Ellie. She's excellent. But let me tell you what, whoever got the funds from the governor or the Washington, DC, it should be an inflation act. And I hope we get more money because today we fed 242 hardworking families in your city of Benita Springs. They're employed, they're veterans, they're senior citizens who did not expect to live this long, their gas has gone up, well, gas is what, $2.99 now at Costco, Bravo Costco. FPL has gone up, their homeowner's insurance has gone up. And I apologize for coming in late, but I heard Mr. Chris Corey talk about nobody's getting FEMA funds. Yes, a bunch of people got the $350 for their soiled food in the refrigerator, but our residents, thanks to Ellie and our city council and our city staff for awarding our agency $70,000 for food insecurity, they got vitamin D milk, clementines, onions, potatoes, fresh eggs, all healthy nutritious items. And I am really proud to say I have a great community, a great board of directors, and I'm proud to be the CEO of Benita Springs Assistance Office because we are making a difference, thanks to everybody in this room and the collaboration. So thank you for keeping your social services first and foremost. Again, welcome Nigel, welcome Jamie, Merry Christmas, Mr. Mayor and council and city staff, happy Kwanzaa. What's the other one? Feliz Navidad and happy Hanukkah. Thank you very much for awarding us that money. It's very well spent in your city, sir.
Speaking of Hanukkah, I hate to bring this up now at this time, what happened to the menorah in the park? Somebody asked me, what, did we light a menorah last year or the year before?
Yes, we, we do have, we had a menorah. There was some repair work that had to be due to that one, but I, I do know we had one that was donated by the local synagogue, so we'll follow up on that.
We still have time to do that. I don't know when the season starts for, for Hanukkah, but I know I've lit, I've helped light the one out on 41. Somebody asked me, what, are we going to light the Hanukkah, I mean, the menorah this year? I said, I don't know, I don't know about it.
We'll follow up on that.
Throw that towards the staff. Thank you so much. I hate to bring it up late. Anything else? We're adjourned. Thank you.